Thank you, and our statement of meeting procedures, please.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors Meeting of Tuesday, November 3rd, 2015. Agendas are available on the wall outside this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during public comment period. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. The board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before a final action is taken. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such, and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the board. Keep in mind that the chairman has a discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all cell phones be turned off or put in silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you. All right, moving on to our consent agenda. Are there any items on consent that any supervisors want to remove for discussion?
I have none, Mr. Chair.
All right, seeing none, any items on consent that any members of the public wanted to remove for discussion prior to the board taking action? Okay, do we have a motion on consent?
No.
We have a motion, Duran, second Montgomery, roll call, please.
Duran?
Yes.
Wygant?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler?
Aye.
Thank you so much. And now time for public comment. This time, any member of the public can address the board on any item that is not on our agenda, knowing that the board cannot take action on items under public comment. Please, as you step forward, identify yourself and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Hanley.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm Kevin Hanley, CEO of the Auburn Chamber of Commerce. And recently, the chamber, along with the county and the city of Auburn, walked and surveyed 144 business owners in the greater Auburn area to find out their views of what we can do in working together at the city level, the county level, and the business level to improve business in the greater Auburn area. And I want to thank two sets of county employees for assistance in completing this survey. First of all, Dave Snyder and the Economic Development Office and Katie Canoyer. They walked and interviewed quite a few business owners, really appreciate their help, and they also put together bags of useful information for the business owners and the managers. So, thank you, Dave, and his office. Also, I did receive a call from Lieutenant Swerington before we did the survey, and I wasn't sure if I was in trouble or not. But he said that since his deputy officers were walking the Bowman-Trane Village area anyway, that he and some of his deputy officers would like to help with the survey. So they did, and they did a wonderful job. We joked about whether their response rate from the business owners would be higher than others, and it was 100%. So, thank you to the sheriff's office for their assistance in our survey. One thing about the survey is it does break down the results of what business owners and managers are seen as improvements in specific areas. So if you look at Highway 49, or Old Town, or the airport, there are specific recommendations from the business owners and managers, which I think is going to be useful for the city and the county and the business going forward. So we hope to work with you to implement the survey results. And I have seven copies, and please give me a call if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, before we jump up to Tahoe, anybody else in Auburn have anything that they'd like to add under public comment? Anybody in Tahoe wish to address the board under public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yes, I can hear you. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident. I'm here today to comment on the Marthis Valley West Parcel Specific Plan Draft Environmental Document for the record. I'm hoping that you, as a board, are looking at the complexity and all the issues that are being requested in this draft environmental document. I understand that you will not be conducting a board public hearing, that the NITREC and the Planning Commission will be the only governing bodies that will be hearing this before the comments are due on December 7th. In reading the alternatives, there really is some confusion. And again, I'm hoping, at the very least, you'll read Chapter 19. And in that chapter, quote, "Although, as noted above, environmental reviews must contain a discussion of potentially feasible alternatives, the ultimate determination as to whether an alternative is feasible or infeasible is made by the lead agency's decision-making body." And it quotes a public resources code. "At the time of the action on the project, the decision-making body may consider evidence beyond that found in the environmental document in addressing such determinations. The decision-making body, for example, may conclude that a particular alternative is feasible or infeasible or undesirable." So I'm hoping that many of you can maybe make time and take the opportunity to either send a staff member or yourselves attend the Planning Commission meeting on November 19th in Tahoe. It is a time-certain item at 10:05 a.m. Thank you.
Thank you.
Morning, Ann Nichols, North Tahoe Preservation Alliance. This is certainly great to be able to come here on this icy day instead of coming down to you guys, which I know you have to do sometimes. But, any case, this is wonderful. Just wanted to give you some feedback on the EIR from Marthis Valley West. I think it really points to the ease with which new development on forest land can be justified. The EIR is amazing. There's really no impacts on rezoning forest land to allow development and commercial. Everything is less than significant. It's not a significant contribution. If the 2,000 people, the population, they're only counting 20% of them, because they say only 20% will be full-time residents. But as we all know, high season, holidays, there'll be a full population of people on the ridge. So, the traffic is, they're having trouble with traffic in the EIR because it's going to require extra lanes on 267. But it was, it's kind of, it just points to how we really need better ridge line protections against urban sprawl. Because obviously, this is going through with some ease. I know that the environmental documents is sort of, you know, always pro-development, but this one, I was, in the seven years I've been reading them, this one was amazing. And then, on the cumulative impacts, they just say, gee, this is, considering all the developments that's going on, this won't be another significant, that much of a significant contribution. So hopefully, we can learn from this and help fix the lack of protections. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else in Tahoe, is there anybody else here? Yes, sir, come on up.
My name's Phil Thompson. I'm from Kings Beach. And I've had several people in the area up there ask me about the snow shoveling and the landscape maintenance of the Kings Beach Commercial Core Project. And I'm just hoping something will be put out to the public to let us know what's going to be done.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing nobody else rise under public comment, we will go ahead and move on to supervisors' committee reports. Why don't we take the occasion of that last comment to let Supervisor Montgomery talk about what she knows is going on up in the area in terms of notifying folks about our snow removal that was a part of the project on an ongoing basis. So, do you want to just go ahead and?
Yeah, we do actually have a related item on our agenda today. But I know that Department of Public Works and Facilities, I'm going to get used to saying that someday, Ken, I promise, has been, you know, fully compliant with all notice requirements in terms of RFPs and working with both our contractors who are on our approved list and also any other contractors who would be interested in working with the county in Kings Beach or elsewhere, for that matter. Ken, while we have you here, is there anything that you would like to add to that? Since you're the man with the ultimate say in how that process really works?
Ken Graham with the Department of Public Works and Facilities. I think we're referring to the contract your board considered back in the last board meeting, where we rejected the bids that were received. They were much higher than we had anticipated at this point. At least in the short term, we're going to be preparing to do the work ourselves, ensure that the public gets that service, until we can provide an alternative method of providing that snow removal.
Okay, thank you. That's enough on that for now, because we do have a related item that will take up. Anything under supervisor committee reports? Any supervisors have to discuss? Supervisor Montgomery?
It's not actually a committee report, but I wanted to just give a great big thank you to all the members of the Placer County community who participated this weekend in a 5K or a 10K mud run and obstacle course, depending on their level of fitness. I was the least fit person there. But it was an absolutely wonderful event, great team building, and I would encourage everyone to come join us next year. You can join me in walking it if you want, so you don't have to be fit. So, please, please join us.
Thank you. Okay, there being no other supervisor committee reports, we'll go ahead and take up our first administrative services item under department items, page 137 in our board packets. This is, conveniently, Snow Removal Services.
Good morning, members of the board. Desiree Belding with Procurement Services. I'm back today to discuss with you Item 6A, Snow Removal Services. Local snow removal services are necessary at nine county facilities, eight county public parking lots, two county roadways, and bus shelters and bus stops throughout the Tahoe area. These locations include Divisions of Public Works and Facilities, Health and Human Services, the Sheriff's Office, and Library. At the October 20th meeting, your board requested further information regarding how other agencies provide snow removal services. Procurement has reached out to the counties and several of the local agencies surrounding the shores of Lake Tahoe, other agencies throughout the state and nation, which also handle snow removal. The most common response for this question is that these services are paid to vendors on a time and material basis, or services are provided in-house. Historically, with our county, these services have been bid every three years, with resulting contracts compensated with a full payment, no matter what type of variations in weather may occur. Procurement has tried several different strategies for snow removal services. Snow removal has also been solicited with our agency on a time and materials approach, but which resulted in no responsive bid received. Snow removal has also been more successful with Placer County when solicited for seasonal pricing. This also assuring that Placer County locations would have first priority for snow removal. The payment of the seasonal pricing has varied as well from paying out in advance of snow season to our current approach of paying out over the course of seven-month snow season. In an effort to address the need for services in California's ongoing drought conditions, the most current bid requirements were adjusted to reflect a tiered approach to providing snow removal services. Invitation for bid number 10478 for snow removal services was developed in collaboration with the departments affected. The bid was distributed to potential bidders through the online system and additional direct outreach to all known snow removal vendors in the Tahoe area and posted on the county's website. Twelve firms reviewed the bid, and a total of six bid responses were subsequently received. The bid was issued with a three-year initial contract term, with an option to renew for two additional one-year periods. This was to encourage long-term partnerships with our county. The bid requested pricing for each location and was evaluated on a line-item basis, with a defined percentage increase for both year two and year three. The results of the new award will be paid out in a manner which compensates our recommended vendors for standby, actual snow removal, and additional compensation should we encounter a heavy snow season. The payment for the snow removal services conducted will be paid on a three-tiered approach. The first tier is what we like to call "snow insurance." Snow insurance is payment for having vendors on standby, or if services are only needed three times or less in a given month. The second tier is full payment for the month based on services being provided four or more times within that month. And the third tier is for additional compensation should Mother Nature provide us with a plentiful year with a snowfall amount exceeding 15 feet or more in a given snow season. Since the new format of a longer-term contract will reflect longer-term partnerships with our Tahoe vendors, your board's approval is required to award blanket purchase orders to our recommended vendors in an aggregate amount not to exceed $717,862. In addition to your board's request at the October 20th meeting, a copy of the scope of work and bid tabulation has been provided for your review. With that, we are requesting your board's approval and are available to answer any questions.
Thank you. Board members have any questions on the item? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah, I do have a question. When you were preparing this new tiered approach, did you reach out to the vendors that would usually customarily apply for this work to ask their input on that?
We do, we did, during the process, have a bid pre-proposal meeting, where vendors were invited to come and review the scope of work, as well as present any questions or concerns they may have. At that meeting, we did have five firms in attendance. They did address, they did raise some concerns, and we did address those via an addendum issued to those vendors.
Thank you.
All right, seeing no other questions by board members and members of the public, have any questions on the side and part of the board taking action? Seeing no members of the public rising, let's pledge the board. Motion, Montgomery, second, Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none? Thank you very much. Thank you. All right. Jump back to our first timed item, and this is the 915. This is being presented by Mr. Snyder in regard to the Hilltop Hotel Project. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Euler, distinguished members of the board, Dave Snyder, Office of Economic Development. This morning, we're here to talk about a funding application for the Hilltop Hotel Project. We've requested two actions this morning. First, to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to submit an application for a community development block grant in the amount of $1,617,875 for the Hilltop Hotel Project. Secondly, to authorize the Economic Development Director or his designee to execute the application and to execute all other related documents in furtherance of the application. A little bit of background on the project. The Hilltop Project is a proposed 127-room Marriott franchise hotel to be located on a 7.5-acre site west of Bowman Road in the Bowman area. The county would apply for CDBG over-the-counter funding from the State Department of Housing and Community Development. The county would in turn loan $1.5 million to the project developer for furniture, fixtures, equipment, and inventory. The funds would then be repaid to the county for future CDBG-related and eligible projects. The total project cost is $18.5 million. The proposed CDBG loan is a requirement of Business Loan Capital, who is the primary project lender. Without the CDBG funds, the project cannot go forward. Forty-three full-time equivalent jobs will be created by the development. Cost estimates for the landwork and construction have been provided by experienced contractors familiar with the site and the requirements of Marriott. And there'll be no general fund impact on the project. One more note by way of further background. Status of the project on September 25th, 2014. The Planning Commission approved the extension of the time request for the Hilltop Center. The approval extended the expiration date of the conditional use permit until October 6th, 2016. Standard mitigation and development fees will be due upon improvement plan review and approval or upon building permit approval as applicable. The existing past due balance for county staff time spent previously on the project is due and payable immediately and must be paid in full prior to acceptance of the is due and payable immediately, and must be paid in full prior to acceptance of the resubmital of the design, site review, and/or improvement plan applications. So with that, that concludes my report, and I'll turn it back to the Chair.
All right. Any Board members, Supervisor Graham?
Yeah, Dave, thanks, thanks for bringing this one forward. You know, I've had a couple of calls on this, specifically why the county would be utilizing a loan and CDBG grant to assist with this development. I know the answer to that question, but I think it's important that you kind of outline why, you know, number one, why we're doing it. Number two, why this particular area qualifies for CDBG, you know, a grant. And the second thing is, is that I think it's important for the public to understand that when the, when and if the music stops here, the county's not going to be in the hotel business. So if you can answer those two questions, I think we've got the concerns that my constituents have with this transaction taken care of.
Got it. Yeah, on the first point, it's a necessary part of what they call the capital stack. So, the project proponents have gone out, and they've sought private investment capital. They have equity in the project. They have pursued what they call EB5, Immigrant Investor Visa Program funding, and there's also an SBA component as well. So this is kind of that last $1.5 million piece to push the project over the top, and hopefully that will get them to the finish line. It's, on the jobs front, there are census tracts that have been looked at for distress criteria, unemployment, poverty levels, so on and so forth. So these 43 jobs will be classified as low and moderate income jobs, and they'll meet the Community Development Block Grant criteria, and it'll be sort of first-come, first-serve for individuals that qualify for, for those jobs based on their income levels. And we'll pull together our Business Advantage Network team and, and do screening and so forth to make sure that those eligibility requirements is, are met. Because there's a reporting function that goes subsequent to this. Prior grants that we've received have had the same sort of lineage. Lastly, on the, does the county want to be in the hotel business? The answer to that is definitive no. And so there'll be safeguards such that we don't find ourselves in the hotel business. I'm sure that the primary lenders don't want to be in the hotel business either. But between the Marriott franchise, I've spoken with a group that they've selected to manage the hotel. I can't think of their name off the top of my head, but they manage properties all across the country and are well-respected. And then lastly, yeah, there will be safeguards such that the, the county doesn't end up with any liability or otherwise obligation related to the project or operating the facility at the end of the day.
I think the most important piece of what you described, and I appreciate the fact that you brought up EB5, because EB5, first of all, this isn't Marriott coming into the county and putting down their billions of dollars building a $17 million hotel. This is a franchise, right? So that's the first piece. The second piece is the EB5, which is real important, which means that there are folks outside the United States that are putting their money into Placer County. And along with that, they have the ability to bring over folks and provide jobs, and they're required to put down a certain amount of dollars, and they're required to put down a certain specific number of folks for jobs in this particular area. So, that's all I needed to flesh out.
Exactly.
All right. Other Board members, Supervisor Montgomery?
Yeah, Dave, thank you for the background on this. This may not be a question for you, this may be a Community Development Resource Agency question, but this project is already approved. This is, this is, this is a financing mechanism rather than project approval, is that correct?
That's correct.
And this project was approved in 2007?
It may go back to 2008 or 2009. Michael?
I'm getting a yes from Michael Johnson in the back of the room. Can you explain, you touched on it a little bit, but can you explain generally what Community Development Block Grants are intended to do?
They're intended to primarily be, in this particular case, with the over-the-counter program, to be sort of gap financing, or, you know, with particular projects that need just that last sort of emphasis of, of funding assistance to either, you know, make a loan-to-value ratio work, or other parts of that capital stack that I mentioned come into play, so that investors feel more confident. The project proponents did hire PKF, which is sort of the most active hotel and lodging consultant out there, out of San Francisco, and looked very carefully at the numbers. And I think all of the investors feel confident that the project will be successful. But at the end of the day, for CDBG, it's really about those low and moderate income jobs. So if they can put folks to work at the, at a ratio of one job per $35,000 lent, then they'll feel that it's qualified and successful, and this project does that.
And then, I guess, the other clarifying question I have on this is that the CDBG money is being used in an area that was a, or is proposed to be used, in an area that was a former redevelopment agency area, is that correct?
You know, I think it was actually just outside our redevelopment project area, but it was either adjacent contiguous, or it met sort of that nexus question, yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Seeing no other comments or questions from Board members, this is a public hearing. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Allow folks who have thoughts or opinions on this, go ahead and address the Board. Please identify yourself, and try to keep your comments to three minutes. Mr. Holmes?
Mike Holmes. I'm here today on behalf of the developers of this project, and as you may know, there was a previous Community Development Block Grant that had been approved for this, that for some mysterious reason was not renewed, I guess, last year. And so, we've gone through the process of redoing that, and I just want to point out that Mr. Hanley's presentation earlier in public comment, one of the things that was brought up was that people in this area would like to have more hotel accommodations available for visitors. And this CDGB funding would help to produce that. Coincidentally, this week, the California Parks and Recreation is restarting the general planning for the Auburn State Recreation Area, which is expected to take about two years to be completed. I would hope that the, this new hotel will be opened at the same time as that process has been completed, and because there are a lot more activities that can be carried out in the American River Canyon. So, and as you are well aware, several years ago, there was a study done about tourism in Placer County. The Tahoe area and South Placer got some high marks, but we, we were told that we needed to do more in this part of Placer County to help develop tourism to a greater extent. So I'm asking that this Board give unanimous vote on approving this, so we can move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Francis. I live at 161 Garth Lane, at the foot of Channel Hill. As a member of Channel Hill Environmental Coalition and a resident of Channel Hill area for 45 years, I must strongly protest the application of the Hilltop LLC for $1.5 million from the Community Development Block Grant Fund. We have been protesting this project since 2008. In the past, we have stated that this is the wrong project for that site, for a number of reasons. Our main concerns were that the project was too big, it would generate too much traffic near Bowman School, and the Channel Hill itself was much too unstable for such a huge project. As you know, it was mined under, under Channel Hill, the gold mines, and it is full of, of tunnels and so forth. It is an unstable hill. Now we add another concern. Has the project manager paid Placer County back the thousands of dollars that he has, that he had, that he owes them? And I believe you answered that, in fact, that he has requested to provide that funding back?
If you would, ma'am, finish, finish your comments, and we'll let staff respond as appropriate, okay? Just go ahead and finish your comments, please.
I'm sorry?
Finish your comments, and we'll have staff respond as appropriate.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
I, I question him, ask the, the project, asking for more governmental funds when they haven't paid back the money that they owe Placer County. So I am asking you to say no to this project, and I'm, I'm hopeful that the project will not go forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, was, was your comment?
If you'll finish, you're done, we will have staff respond once we're done with public comments.
Should I go sit down?
Just go ahead and have a seat. Thank you. Staff will respond when we're done with public comment. Thank you. Let's continue on with any other members of the public that wish to address the Board
Good morning. Michael Garabian, Friends of the North Fork. We're not involved in this project, but want to note for the record that if this project doesn't go forward, that, and if it does, maybe there's some accommodation for this kind of concern. This, this location, it would be an excellent location for an overlook of the Sierras and the North Fork, of course. It's highly potentially valuable as, including as an economic asset. We don't see any, don't fault county economic development for trying to promote the economy in this way. And things that we would hope the county could consider for something like this, that county parks might look at this for possible park grants, or foundation grants for parks, or there may be historical issues here, in terms of this being a place where miners in the mountains presumably looked to this as kind of a monument, or maybe went up there when they were hauling up in Auburn for the winter to see when they could get back in the mountains. Or Sierra Conservancy grants, or maybe their Lady Bird Johnson Highway beautification grants still around, and consulting with the Placer Land Trust, of course, and their expertise about if, the feasibility of making this kind of, some kind of a, a park, or, or overlook. So that's a value the area has potentially, and I guess even possibly with, with the facility up there. And maybe there's some way to combine that with, with the facility. So, wanted to bring those, that, that potential, that great potential of the site to your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the application before us for CDBG funding? Seeing no other comments, we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Dave, did you want to address the issue that was raised in regard to the previous dollars that were?
Michael Johnson could probably address this better than I, but our colleague Jerry Haas, who's a senior planner at SEEDRA, did indicate that there was in the ballpark of about $50,000 owed. The developer has made a couple of payments to bring that down. I believe it's still in the neighborhood of $40,000. So as I stated earlier, that is due and payable, and must be, those payments must be made before staff can continue to process, particularly as we get toward design and site plan review.
Okay. Thank you very much. Mr. Duran, you have a question or comment?
And you will report to us if they don't pay that?
I will.
Okay. Second question that I had was with regards to the use of any of these sources of funding, you know, Community Development Block Grant, USDA. Those have all been through, in this particular, it was, it was Community Development Block Grant. You've gone through the application process, it's been approved by the federal government, Housing and Urban Development, and you're, that's all been taken care of?
The Housing and Community Development staffers invited us to pull an application together. We've done that. Typically, when they invite you to apply, they want to fund the project, they get a lot of preliminary information, they, they want to do deals, and this is one that they like very much for the Auburn area, for some of the reasons that Mr. Holmes stated, and that you've heard here this morning. So there are, there's an application that's this thick, it's on file in the clerk's office, and we would welcome the members of the public to review that if they'd like to do so. But that'll be delivered to Sacramento this week. There is a process, some presentations, and there's a loan committee that looks at these, so we'll rely on them to make their decision in the not-too-distant future.
And our participation is entirely, along with, you know, there has to be an approval before we can participate.
Exactly.
Thank you.
All right. Supervisor Montgomery?
Thank you. So I just wanted a clarification. There, there is a requirement before the developer would be entitled to this block grant, that they pay any fees currently owed?
Absolutely.
Okay. And, and then, I want to make sure that I heard you correctly. This is essentially a renewal of a Community Development Block Grant that had already been approved but had lapsed?
There was the desire to apply, a formal application was never made.
Okay. But the state had also invited us at that point in time to bring this forward?
Yes.
Okay. And I want to thank Mrs. Francis. I, I got your voicemail yesterday, but unfortunately, you didn't leave a phone number, so I couldn't call you back. I apologize. I would have reached out had you left a number, but thank you for coming today and speaking. That was it.
Okay. Seeing no other comments at this point, what's the pleasure of the Board?
Second.
Motion Holmes, Second Montgomery, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. We will take up our 9:30 timed item now. This is a SEEDRA item regarding the 200-year flood plain protection.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Honorable Board. I'm Crystal Jacobson with Placer County Planning Services today. The item before you is a county-initiated general plan amendment, intended to bring the county's general plan into compliance with state flood protection law. With me today is Nikki Strigan, who has led this effort to update the general plan, and who will provide a presentation on this item.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the Board. Our, let's see, which direction do I, here we go. The purpose of our presentation, presentation today, of course, is to address the requirements in the Central Valley Flood Protection Act of 2008, and to update our general plan accordingly, in compliance with some, some six interrelated flood management bills. in compliance with some six interrelated flood management bills, including Senate Bill Five and its subsequent amendments, and of course, to strengthen the connection between land use and flood protection. The legislative requirements require us to look at the land use, conservation, and safety elements. And in addition to these three elements, we've also taken a look at the public services element in order to maintain consistency among and throughout our general plan. The legislation also requires that we meet the urban level of flood protection, which is required to be met in specific locations in the Sacramento and San Joaquin Drainage District. By way of definition, the urban level of flood protection determines protection that is necessary to withstand flooding and has a 1 in 200 chance of occurring in any given year. That's met only under certain criteria, which we'll take a look at next. So a project and the land use decisions that are affected by this particular legislation include discretionary projects and ministerial projects. If that project meets all of these criteria, then it's subject to urban level of flood protection. That includes a location, a project with a location within the Sacramento-San Joaquin Valley, which is essentially most of the county west of the Sierra Nevada Crest, in an urban area with 10,000 residents or more, within a flood hazard zone in a FEMA map, in an area with potential flood depth above three feet, and this is kind of a key part, key part of the criteria, and then in a watershed with a contributing area of more than ten square miles. So in order to give you a sort of visual look at these very technical requirements, we've put together some examples of what this looks like. You can see here a cross-section showing, and I'll put it near the battery, it might be dead. You can see here in this cross-section, the limits of the 100-year floodplain are delineated, and then the 200-year floodplain, which is just beyond that. The ULOP, which is actually applicable where there's three feet of flooding or more. So you can see the hatched area, which is actually measured from the 200-year floodplain and to a depth of three feet, is actually what the urban level of flood protection, where that is. I'm going to show you a plan view of this. Again, sort of a hypothetical example, the 200-year floodplain is delineated in dark blue, the 100-year floodplain shown in the lighter blue, and then the limits of the urban level of flood protection shown in the hatched area. Now, you'll notice in both of these examples that the urban level of flood protection is within the 100-year floodplain. And in fact, during a review of our staff report, folks had said, hey, well, you know, what's the, why are we subject to this when we already regulate to our 100-year floodplain? Well, the legislation was designed to protect the Central Valley from flooding. Many jurisdictions, cities, and counties do not participate in regulating to their 100-year floodplain, as Placer County already does. And so this legislation, of course, is designed to capture those areas. So Placer County does regulate to its 100-year floodplain through participation in the National Flood Insurance Program. And of course, based on staff's analysis, in almost all instances in Placer County, the urban level of flood protection will be within the 100-year floodplain boundary, and therefore, subject to standards that we hold projects to today. Let's see. So some of the significant proposed changes we're taking a look at are amendments to the land use, natural resources, health and safety, and public services and facilities element. Those elements include changes from referencing the 100-year floodplain to something we're calling the county's regulatory floodplain. We have created a new implementation program to map and identify the existing and planned development areas that are within this area, so proposing to conduct mapping in the next year. We've added some new additions to the glossary, which include the term the county's regulatory floodplain. And then, of course, I think it's important to note that there are no modifications to land use designations, the land use map, or capital improvement plan. In terms of the anticipated impact, staff has determined that the changes are relatively minimal. Since flood protection at the 100-year level will continue to be regulated, and existing land uses, zoning, and restrictions on development will continue to guide safe development, and therefore, changes are minimal. Based on the location criteria, we've determined that there's a very small difference between the 100-year and the urban level of flood protection area for most of the county. And then, of course, the base flood elevation for the 100-year floodplain, which is already established through some of our ordinances and manuals, will continue to set the standard for safety. And with regard to development projects, large development projects will be asked to do some of this mapping while we pull together mapping in the interim. Smaller development projects, like a building permit, staff will do its best to support the applicant through that mapping process. All those things being said, a negative declaration was prepared for the project, and the recommendation from staff is to adopt that negative declaration as well as the resolution in the staff report. And of course, we're available for questions if you have them.
Thank you. Board members have any questions? Supervisor Duran?
Yeah. There's a lot of information to go through, and maybe just to summarize what you just told us, there really hasn't been a whole lot of substantive changes to our program, and most of the stuff is housekeeping. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Nikki, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate it. There's one thing in the staff report that I just wanted to get a little bit of a clarification on. There's a paragraph that talks about the actions that the planning commission took, and the planning commission had some concern relating to modification of structures. Can you tell me what the resolution of that was?
Yes. The planning commission thought that the term modification of structures was a little too vague, and so we changed the language in a few of the policies to specify, we exchanged modification of structures for the term construction of a new home, just to become a little more specific.
Okay, good. So it went from a sort of amorphous, nonspecific description to something that's actually that people can rely upon?
That's correct, yeah. I mean, a building permit or ministerial project technically trigger compliance with this legislation, so we, exactly, we adjusted the term modification to specify that.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
So one of the criterion that was listed was if it is in an area of urban development. Do they provide a definition of urban development when they say that?
There is a definition of urban development, and I believe, I believe, it falls in line similar to what the SEQA definition is in terms of, it's related to population. But yes, that criteria is defined.
We don't know what, in other words, I'm trying to get a sense, we, of course, are looking at, in the western area, some greenfield development that is going to be truly more urbanized, but as you move a little further east, particularly, you say, in the minors ravine watershed out into the Granite Bay area, would that level of overall land use intensity be considered urban? I'm just trying to get a sense for where these things kick in in our area.
Yeah, I think we should go back to the definition of the ULOP and look, because it's definitely population-focused. And so the 10,000, in an urban area with 10,000 residents or more, I think is key there in terms of defining what an urban area is. So yeah, it's a higher intensification of land use. And we don't have the definition here for you, I apologize for that, but it is, the purpose is really to provide protection in these more intense land development areas.
Okay. I mean, I realize you're trying to interpret a new state law, and a lot of times, state laws aren't written with the kind of specificity that allows you to really understand how it would apply across the board. But again, I come back to, you know, in the Granite Bay area, you have the Tree Lake Village subdivision, which you would, even though many would say suburban, is definitely higher density, more urban overall versus the Joe Rogers Road area and that area, which is 2.3s, and is that considered urban? And so, given that we have a number of different projects that are kind of working through the process that will impact some of these waterways, I'm just curious if we had anything that said, yes, here, no, not here.
Right. I just wanted, I'll just follow up again with what this, we defined the urban level of flood protection in the staff report, and again, up here, just kind of noting it. But it's areas that are located within an urban area that is developed, a developed area with 10,000 residents or more, or an urbanized area that is a developed area or an area outside a developed area that is planned or anticipated to have 10,000 residents or more within the next 10 years. So that's straight out of the state code. I don't know if that helps.
It's all right. I'll take it as it comes. Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Before our board takes action, do any members of the public wish to address the board on this issue of 200-year flood protection and our consistency with the new state law? So we'll open the public hearing, and we will close the public hearing, and we will bring it back to the board for consideration of the neg deck and also the adoption of the resolution. Motion Duran, second, Montgomery. May we have a roll call on this, please?
Duran? Wigan? Holmes? Montgomery? Uller?
Aye. Thank you very much. We'll go ahead now and take up our 9:45 SEDRA item, so that staff doesn't have to move too far. And this is the appeal of a minor boundary line adjustment.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. EJ Faldi with the Planning Services Division, and joining me today is Melanie Jackson, who will give you a presentation on this third-party appeal of the boundary line adjustment.
Good morning. The project before you is an appeal of the planning commission's approval of a minor boundary line adjustment to modify, to transfer a piece of property of two acres from a property owner, Stafford's property, to property owner Pantel's property. This location, this is a map of the location of the property where it's located, and it is off of Dog Bar Road in the Colfax area, and it's just adjacent to the Bear River. This is an aerial of the property. It's just illustrating where the river is and where the Pantel property is, which is this portion here, and then the Stafford property, which is here, and then runs up the side of the Pantel property, and then right here is the Dog Bar Bridge, which actually bisects Mr. Stafford's property. And this is the parcel map, which basically just gives you a better idea of where the parcels are in relation to the river. And here is the MBLA plat map, which is what would, this would be the final representation of the properties after the approval of the MBLA. Should it be approved? The MBLA was originally approved by the parcel review committee, and that approval was appealed to the planning commission. The planning commission met on August 27th and denied the appeal, and again, approved the parcel review committee chairman's approval of the minor boundary line adjustment. And we have had an appeal of that decision as well. The appellant is asking for a denial of the planning commission's approval of the minor boundary line adjustment, and would like to have the minor boundary line adjustment sent back to the parcel review committee for further review. And the main points of the appeal set forth by the North Fork of the Friends of the North Fork, excuse me, are that the SEQA exemption that's been applied to this minor boundary line adjustment, which is Section 15305 of the SEQA guidelines, minor alterations in land use limitations, doesn't apply because the minor boundary line adjustment does not meet the exemption requirements that the property must be less than 20% slope on average, and that the minor boundary line adjustment cannot result in a change in land use or density. Consistent with the findings of the planning commission, staff found that the exemption does apply due to the fact that the property is less than 20% in average slope, and that the minor boundary line adjustment would not make a change in use or further development of the property by way of the minor boundary line adjustment. The appellant also asserts that the county cannot apply a SEQA exemption simply because it also does not, it falls within the exceptions of the California Environmental Quality Act whereby exemptions cannot be applied. And the minor boundary line adjustment, again, should be heard by the parcel review committee a second time. As far as the categorical exceptions, those are based on a significant effect on the environment due to unusual circumstances, and because of this, the exceptions provided would prevent the application of those exemptions. Consistent with the planning commission's findings, staff found that the uses that were listed whereby the exceptions wouldn't apply were based on future development that could occur on the property that isn't affected by the access, which is, the main point of this minor boundary line adjustment is to provide, to transfer the portion of property that the Pantels currently access, which is a portion of the Stafford's property, and it is bisected by Dog Bar Road. Because the Pantels have been using this piece of property for 30 years to access their 69-acre property, the Stafford's and the Pantels worked out a minor boundary line adjustment whereby that two-acre portion would be transferred to the Pantel property, and they would be able to use that access as part of their own property as opposed to part of the Stafford property. Based on all of these assertions and staff's review, as well as the planning commission's decision to approve the MBLA, staff recommends that the board deny the appeal filed by Mr. Garabedian on behalf of Friends of the North Fork, uphold the planning commission's decision to approve the minor boundary line adjustment, make the finding that the minor boundary line adjustment is consistent with the requirements of Placer County Code and the Colfax and community plan, as well as the Placer County general plan. So we recommend that you uphold the planning commission's approval, essentially, and approve the minor boundary line adjustment. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Board members have any questions, or staff prior to the appellant coming forward, Mr. Duran?
Yeah. Your last, one of the comments that you made before you concluded was that the resulting action, why we're here, is because both parties, the Pantels and the other adjoining party, worked out a deal. So they're good, they've agreed to this transaction.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Supervisor Montgomery.
Yeah, just so I'm clear, there are only two parties in this transaction, and ID is not a participant in this proposed minor boundary line adjustment.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Duran, your light's still on. Do you have anything else?
Oh, no, sorry.
That's fine. Okay. At this time, we'll have the appellant come forward and state his case. Mr. Garabedian, would 10 minutes be sufficient for your case?
For my part where I would talk, yes. There may be other questions that I might want to respond to, points that might be brought up.
There may be other questions that I might want to respond to, points that might be brought up, I might want to address.
That's fine.
Michael Garabedian, from Friends of the North Fork, we were formed 10 years ago, 501(c)(3) organization. I think I could sum up in a few words, because in our letter yesterday, we responded to the, what the critical parts of the staff report are, could sum up in a few words that what we're being told is, you can't make us do that. You know, we, we won't do what you want, or basically, no, to the points we brought up. Now, what they, to us, that really means to say that at parcel review, the staff and Planning Commission are not doing much more than the zoning check on this. They may know more, but they're not putting it into a report to the public, so that when you go into the parcel review on a minor boundary line adjustment, there's no staff report, it's on a consent calendar, you have to get it off the consent calendar, and then what happens if you raise questions, the parcel review decider will call you up to the deas and explain what they think about it, because he has some ideas, or tell the whole group what they think about it, which, which to us should be, and it's the first thing in our appeal, revealed to the public, so that when you go in there, there's a staff report on this. Now, the, but this is where the general, all of this, and that's what this appeal is fundamentally about, is this is where the general plan comes in. The general plan was updated two and a half years ago, as you know, it's current, it's pretty good, it's not being used. We just get the, the result that this is all, this all complies with the general plan. Now, the same government code section that says minor boundary line adjustments are not subject to the subdivision map act, they are not subject, they don't have to file plat maps and so forth under this section. And that was the excuse we were given at parcel review and planning, at parcel review two times, that we don't do anything, we don't do any staff reports because it's exempt from the subdivision map act. Well, that's not the only authority that parcel review and planning and planning staff have, and we've raised our SEQA issues in the record and don't want to argue those legal issues before you, it's in the record. So, but also, that same direction of law that exempts minor boundary line adjustments from subdivision map act, it also spells out, it exactly spells out, the authority that parcel review and the county have, has. The local agency shall not impose conditions or exactions on its approval of a lot line adjustment, except to conform to the local general plan, any applicable specific plan, any coastal plan, and zoning and building. Now, the, the, in our letter yesterday, we listed some of the general plan provisions that apply to this and should be applied to this, and that's the fundamental thing we're asking you to do, is to ask them to take another look. You're not getting the information on this that you need. The zoning tech information was in the report to the Planning Commission on our appeal to the Planning Commission, but this needs to go back so that Cedras staff can look at these important issues that are affected, that are affected, and would not happen without this, this boundary line adjustment. The issues we list as SEQA issues, well, there are SEQA issues that have a back and forth with the general plan. Independent of anything else, it's the general plan policies that should be looked at. Now, we're kind of saying, you ought to have a general plan in your back pocket all the time and be very familiar with it, or in your purse, because that's the fundamental thing at issue here. There are a number of general plan policies, that we're not going to dictate or tell them how they should apply them or what they should do. So, we're here because there needs to be a message that planners are not just zoning techs, that on MBLAs, we need them to be planners and apply their planning expertise and to look at the general plan and say, gee, the general plan has policies about what would happen if there was logging and log trucks are trying to use that, that road there with the, the one lane, one lane over the canal, one lane bridge over the river, sharp turns, prohibited logging trucks and other kinds of trucks of certain design can't use it. There are multiple issues that this, this project raises, forest issues, canal safety issues, and we've, we've mentioned them all in our letter. So, the, the, we've prepared some visuals and so forth for that. I don't really think they're essential for this presentation, and I think it's also more fair if we take those visuals back to parcel review for public comment period, back to the Planning Commission for public comment, to the MACs and so forth for public comment, so people can see exactly what we're talking about, what these planning commissions are, issues are. So we hope that now you would take that action and refer it back to staff to deal with these planning issues. That's why we're here, and that's where we're basically pleading for minor boundary line adjustments, that we use the general plan policies and goals.
Yeah, Mr. Garabedian, using your last example, how, I mean, it seems to me that if someone were to pull a logging trucker or a logging business permit, that that's the time that we would be doing this analysis.
Yes, the general plan mandates that.
Then why would we waste the time on doing it in advance, is what I'm asking?
Well, this is a permit for a minor boundary line adjustment, and this is our, this is the time to anticipate that.
Well, all we're doing is moving the line. We haven't authorized any building, we haven't authorized any, anything to take place there other than the movement of the line. Yeah, you know, I'm just, I'm just throwing that out there, because it seems to me that we're, you're asking us to do a lot more work when we haven't, when there hasn't been any action to warrant the analysis.
Well, not a lot more work, work appropriate to what, what could not happen on the land at all without this approval. It's like an incorporation, a number of, providing public infrastructure, you know, you're, you're.
I would agree to a certain extent that if we were pulling permits to do those kinds of things, that's the point in time that we would look into them. But to have us do that, have the county do that now, it just doesn't seem, it seems like we're putting one in front of the other when it shouldn't be that way. That's just my comment, all right?
We're having a very old argument, it's been in many other contexts, like annexations, for instance.
It's a policy argument, all right?
Yes.
And, and do you have any law that shows that we should do it this way?
We didn't come here to argue the law, and we are here to bring up, no, bring this up as an important policy issue for implementing the general plan, and we believe that this will eventually happen, and, but this is, this is a particular project, it's the first minor boundary line adjustment project that we've known of or had a chance to tackle these exact issues. They're just not, by the time they get to you, they, they just haven't been developed. You don't really have the record before you, you don't have the staff reports, the public doesn't have them, so that your, your comment is perfectly, perfectly in tune with the information you have, and it's because they haven't done their job. And if they're not going to do it, we're willing to keep trying to do it.
All right, I'm gonna, if I may, just step back in and establish something here. Did your 10 minutes run yet, or did this? Okay, okay. Well, let's let the gentleman finish his, the 10 minutes that we allotted him for the appeal, then we'll take questions or comments from the board.
Well, I'd like to save it for any answers later, if I can come back.
Well, you're, so you're done then in terms of your presentation?
Yes, and I'd like, if there's a few minutes left, I'd like to reserve it for a little.
For questions, all the rest, it's just simply the 10 minutes applies to just your presentation, so if you're concluded with your presentation, that's great. So then, we will open it up to the board for questions or comments. Mr. Duran already had his, Supervisor Montgomery, go ahead.
Mr. Garabedian, thank you. I've been the recipient of.
Why don't, sir, if you would, why don't you just stay up here while these questions get asked, since they're coming at you anyway?
Yeah, thank you. I've been the recipient of, I think, many of, I don't know how many emails you've sent, but I've followed all your emails, read them, followed up with staff, followed up with some SEQA attorneys that I know personally for conversation, and what I'm trying to understand is, first of all, you're calling a MBLA a project, and project is a very specific term under SEQA, and this does not meet the definition of a project. So let's start with that piece. What I, what I have tried to glean from, from the emails to staff that you included me on, and thank you for including me, is, you know, what specifically are you trying to address here? What specifically are your concerns? And what I identified was a couple of things very particularly. The first was a concern that this somehow would encourage or allow to be implemented this Centennial Reservoir Project that, that NID is proposing. I, I don't see frankly how this makes any difference to that. It's the same to property owners who have just exchanged a minor amount of property through this minor boundary line adjustment. The second issue that you raised was this concern with logging and logging trucks. I don't believe that at this point, there's any proposal for a timber harvest plan or, or any sort of logging on the property. Is that correct, Melanie?
That's correct.
Okay. And to follow on Supervisor Duran's issues, when and if either this Centennial Reservoir Project comes forward or some sort of timber harvest plan, that seems to me to be the perfect time for our board to be fleshing these questions out and asking tough questions of our county staff and the other folks who might be proposing it. I, I'm just struggling with how a minor boundary line adjustment plays into either of those issues, which are entirely speculative in nature at this point. Can you answer me that?
Well, you brought, started out with SEQA, and we're not here to argue SEQA with you, the technique, we have covered that extensively in our letters.
Well, you've raised, you've raised SEQA as an issue here, and so I think SEQA is relevant to this.
It is, and we've made a record on that, basically. And county council's here, and I'm not enough of an expert to argue those issues. We've raised them, but, but your answers, your questions are fair, and they're questions to us that are, we can address outside of SEQA. Now, one issue is the problem of secondary homes. There's an old homestead there that's falling apart that could be replaced by a home, and then there's a secondary home could also be built on the property. That, that is potential development that could not happen. The logging could not happen as far, as we understand it, and maybe some other arrangement could be made for, for temporary. And we've pointed out the general plan provisions that should, in our view, cause you to look at MBLAs. There's no, what we are here, we are, what we are trying to do is break years, decades, maybe, but at least the 11 years we've been here, where the county dismisses every minor boundary line adjustment as being just this little thing, in this case, 1.99 acres, doesn't have a broader effect. That's what they've done on the examples in our letter yesterday, where MBLAs turn into eyesore houses overlooking the canyon, where SEQA is not done is one of the factors, but where there are, especially under the visual impact policies of the general plan, there are, there are significant policies in that general plan, and each of these areas, there are policies that we believe shouldn't be dismissed just by saying, you know, there aren't any, this is all consistent with the general plan. So, we're looking for staff to apply their planning expertise, the same way they did with flood zoning, the same way they do on, on various other projects, that, now, maybe they are doing research on MBLAs, maybe they are doing investigations, because at the Planning Commission, they said, these are matters between the applicant and the county, leaving the public out. There's no way we can really have this discussion here unless they're developing, you know, responding to these issues. If we say, here are some general plan issues, we hope they would look at them. So, yeah, there's, there's no doubt that we are trying to get the county to do something it doesn't do, hasn't, has never done as far as we know, doesn't want to do, wants to leave MBLAs out. And then, when these major impacts turn up later, they, oh, it's, they happen, secondary homes happen, houses like, and the Eagle Ridge, the, the secondary home that now is proposed to be divided into its own parcel with its own potential secondary homes, these happen. These happen in the North Fork, and they are a mess, they are unsightly, and they shouldn't have happened, and they happened because of minor boundary lines adjustments, and that, that's what we see in this one. We want you to send a message to the staff and the Planning Commission that the public needs information on these things. And SEQA, yeah, some of those issues are SEQA issues and not, but the, we're saying, we're bringing this to you for your responsibility and your concern about the general plan, and that's, that's why we're here, that to get the county to take MBLAs seriously and not just dismiss them as a 1.99 acre exchange between properties. We want them to do their disclosure, not just their environmental disclosure, yes, that, but we want them to make sure that the planning has done their job as planners and not just plan checkers or, or zoning techs.
Okay, thank you, Supervisor Duran.
Yeah, I just want to follow up by, by asking you, does any other jurisdiction treat minor boundary alignments like this?
I haven't looked into that, but, but clearly, if, oh, sorry, go ahead.
And my second comment is, is you're, we're both attorneys, right? Do you ever file lawsuits before investigating whether or not you have a valid claim?
Have what?
Do you ever file lawsuits, do you just, if you, if a client comes to you and says, hey, you know, I want to file a lawsuit on this guy, do you do your investigation before you file that lawsuit?
I'm sorry, I don't understand why that's, I, I've never had a private practice, I've worked for public agencies.
Just forget the question, but my point is, and going back to the sequencing of this, if, if you don't have any, any evidence or any, you know, other counties or cities that do it any differently, you know, why, why should we do it differently?
Well, that's a good question, and I think.
And maybe you ought to come back when you have that, because right now, we're not really getting anywhere. And I'll go back to the sequencing piece, is that, right now, I see moving a line on a map, all right? If that was moving a line on a map with a logging application, or a housing subdivision, or a building permit, then I would agree with you, all right? But that's not what we're dealing with here.
Well, we disagree, but I think it's a very fair question. What do other counties do with this? And it also points to a question I hadn't thought of, and that is, what if the law supports doing nothing at all on minor boundary line adjustments? Well, in that case, we would suggest that the law is wrong and should be changed, and all the issues we've developed here are perfect examples to go to the legislature and say, don't you think this law should be changed? But we don't think that's an issue. We think under the general plan, you have the ability to do the things you're concerned about.
Yeah, but you haven't established that the law is wrong. And the second question is, is that even if the law was wrong, until we, until it was demonstrated to the board in, in our actions that we were doing something wrong and that we should do something more, that's the point in time when we should do it. You don't just go out and say it's wrong and not have any evidence or a body of evidence to, to establish what is wrong and what is right.
We are talking about two entirely different things. We are talking about the county's authority, planning's authority, to use its discretion to interpret the general plan, that it should be doing the things we're saying. You know, we're not saying that, that if you don't, we're not saying that it's illegal for you to, to ignore the general plan, I don't know if it is or not. The point here is, there's absolutely no question that the county has the discretion to look, to look into these issues under the general plan, and I don't think there's any question that it doesn't want to, it has no interest in doing that. Now, is that legal or not legal? That's not our point. The point is that you should be directing them, that's what we would hope, to say, do your planning, bring your planning expertise to, on these issues, and don't put MBLAs on the trash heap of planning.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to go ahead and open the public hearing on this item, because a public hearing is required before the board can take action. Is there anybody who wish to address the board under, under the public hearing?
Hi. My name's Keith Pantell, and we are the owners of the property that's in question. We've owned the property 44 years, our family, with another family. We've owned the property 44 years, our family, with another family, the Levinsons. We have no desire to develop the property, we have no desire to cut timber down. Alls we want to do is get the right of way for our road, because we do have a home that's in there, that's about a quarter mile into the, and we just need the right of way for the road. It's as simple as that. The Friends of the North Fork, they have some idea that we're going to put in some huge development. If they really looked at the property, there's only four pieces of, four spots in the entire 68 acres that you could build a house, okay? So at the very most, there could be four homes built. The property in question that we're trying to purchase cannot be built on. It's already been engineered, you can't put a septic system there. The only reason we're getting this piece of property is because it goes through our road. And Mr. Stanton has brought up an issue with us, you know, originally he wanted to develop it, and he found out it couldn't be developed. So we went in to purchase the property just so we have the right of way for the future. I can't say that we'll never sell it. It might get sold, but I think at that point, if there was a question about development, then the Planning Commission would step in and control that. I think right now, there's just, there's just no issue here. I mean, the commission has okayed it. I've driven 150 miles for this little deal, I've done it twice, and I'll keep coming. The Levinson party, Jeff is an attorney, he has his own law firm, he's ready to come up and fight this thing. He doesn't think there's really a big issue here that should get cleared and sent through. We're surprised it didn't get sent through before. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, anybody else want to address the board under the public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chair. Ron McIllogh, I wasn't planning on speaking, but I thought the Supervisor of First District brought up a good question. County of El Dorado, this Board of Supervisors recently heard a lot line adjustment, we call it boundary, you guys call it boundary line adjustment, and we heard it because there was a Williams Act overlay. All of our boundary line and lot line adjustments are handed in Planning Services at the Planning Commission, so I thought it was a good question, was able to give some information there. But we have heard these before, we say the County of El Dorado, but simply because our authority for a Williams Act to amend that lot line or boundary line adjustment, which was actually a little more significant than this, had the Williams Act overlay, so those were concurrent. Thank you, Chair.
No, I appreciate that, and I hope out of this discussion that if there is a lack of, perceived lack of transparency, that the folks in planning will, you know, take a look at what we've discussed, you know, this is more of a policy question, discussion, you know, that's out there more than anything else, so, but I appreciate knowing that.
It's pretty transparent. Great work. Thank you, Ward.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're going to close public hearing, bring it back to the board for any final comments and action. Any board members have Supervisor Montgomery, something you'd like to?
Yeah, I actually just want to thank county staff for the number of different public hearings that this has gone through and opportunities for public input. While I don't dismiss Mr. Garabedian's concerns, I think the county has 100% met its obligations, is following our general plan, is following the laws of the state of California, and Mr. Garabedian's concerns about, you know, what state law, how state law applies to our own actions here at the board, I think is a question that he should take up with our state legislators if he feels that needs to be changed. But we operate under the existing law and the existing sets of rules and regulations. And in this case, I find nothing out of absolutely 100% compliance with our general plan and what we're expected to do. Furthermore, I want to thank Mr. Pantel for driving all this way. I've lost you, there you are, thank you. I don't even understand frankly why this is in front of us today. I understand that people have the right to appeal, and I'm delighted that Mr. Garabedian took his right as a member of the public, but I would move, you know, short of any other comments from my board that we deny the third party appeal, we affirm the Planning Commission's decision, and we affirm the Planning Commission's decision, I'm just going to say, items two, three, and four on this item.
I agree, Mr. Chairman, can I?
Yes, please.
I agree with what Jennifer is saying about this particular matter. The big thing for me, you know, is that we have an agreement here between two private parties over a piece of, over a piece of property that they've taken the time to negotiate, they both have rights to do that. I agree that we've done what we need to do. If there's anything else that we might want to do, that's something that I think staff and the Planning Commission, that's their ball of wax, but I think it all makes sense to me, it passes the smell test. I don't see any, anything that would give me pause for concern on this minor boundary adjustment.
All right, we have a motion, Montgomery, and a second by Holmes. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed, none, thank you very much. We are one minute away from our 10:30, and environmental services might take a while, so we're just gonna, everybody take a deep breath, and then at 10:30 we'll take up our 10:30 timed item, which is, of course, the abandonment of Millside Road. And I will let you know when my happy little clock says 10:30, because that one is off, obviously by a bit. What's that? That's all right, that's all right, that's all right.
In Millside Road in Crosscut Court, at that time, you directed staff to bring back findings that reflected the testimony and the board direction that we heard today. So you will see changes in the various resolutions trying to address what we heard on that given day. At that time, you also directed staff to provide additional time for the parties in the hope that they might be able to resolve their differences. We came back to your board prepared to discuss this item on October 6th. At that time, the applicant and the opponents of the abandonment requested that we delay it and continue it to this day here today. So what we're asking you to do, we've had a lot of discussion about this, we're asking you today to consider the resolution approving the addendum associated with the abandonment, consider the resolution adopting the findings and the statements of fact, consider the resolution to abandon Millside Road in Crosscut Court under the conditions that are attached as part of your board package, which include various reservations for easements for utilities, a private road easement for the people that were, that are in the retreat subdivision, as well as public transit. And then finally, we were asking you to approve the indemnity agreement between us and the retreat homeowners, in case there are any third parties that feel aggrieved by the action. The one thing I do want to make that, for the conditions of approval, there are changes that have been made that are in your packet, one that I just want to highlight that is, you know, substantial difference that we heard, is number three in Exhibit E, conditions of approval. Just to read it, it was once requiring an irrevocable offer of dedication from the Retreat Owners Property Owners Association. The new reading is the grant of a conditional irrevocable offer of dedication from the Retreat Owners Association to Placer County for Millside Road, or the reservation of an IOD from the abandonment, and said IOD shall be conditioned as described in the resolution of abandonment. The key difference there being, at one time, we gave your board the right to take back Millside Road anytime at your discretion. Now we're saying it's really only if there is a breach of the indemnity agreement, assuming your board approved this, or in some other way required us because of these proceedings that are occurring today or the aftermath. So that is probably a substantial change, but other than that, we're happy to answer any questions and let public testimony be heard.
Okay, questions of, can by board members this time? All right, seeing none, we are already in an ongoing public hearing that has been continued, but we are going to begin the public hearing with a brief position summary by the applicant for the abandonment, then to be followed by a summary of current position by the opposition to the abandonment. Just kind of bring us up to speed on your relevant points as to where we stand today with this item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Tim Tarrant for the retreat, with me as usual, Chris Hanratty and Hayes Parsibock, both also representing the retreat, as well as my associate Chad Roberts. I'm so glad we're here, finally. I think this is it, and we're here today to ask you to approve the resolution of abandonment and the associated documentation that goes with it, as Mr. Graham described to you. And we are in agreement with the staff recommendation, all the conditions in the staff report, and the resolutions, et cetera. I have two other comments, so that I think I do want to make it this time. One is that, one of the things, one of the conditions in your resolution is that we grant you an irrevocable offer of dedication in case you ever want to take the road back, and there are certain conditions under which that could be triggered. The third condition was that if Schaefer Mill Road, or a majority of Schaefer Mill Road, ever becomes a public road again, and believe it or not, the Marthis Camp lawyers yesterday submitted a letter to you that objected to that and said that that was unlawful condition. Well, if it's unlawful, we certainly don't need it, and if they don't want it, we would ask you to remove it, so that it does not become a point of contention in the future. So that is one request we would make. The second thing I did want to do is just briefly say that the reason for the continuance last month that got us here was a settlement discussions. Those discussions continue. We have agreed in concept to a six-month trial period for shuttle, their shuttle use through the gate. We're down to just a few terms that we haven't agreed to yet. I can't say that we will agree to them, but if we do, and we reach an agreement, then we will jointly ask the county to enter into a tolling agreement with us, which would, is basically a standstill for six months while this experiment plays itself out, and there would be no litigation between at least these parties during that period of time. So I did want to at least mention that, and your council may want some direction from you on that today. Other than that, we really hope you will move the resolution today of abandonment, the associated documentation, and we thank you for your patience in getting here, your understanding, all the hard work your staff has done to get us here. Thank you, happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Tarrant, right at this moment? Okay, seeing none, does the representation of those that were opposed to the abandonment wish to add anything at this time?
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Harry O'Brien. Pleased to be here again this morning, I guess. And as you probably recall, I represent jointly the Marthis Camp Community Association and the DMB Highlands Group, that was the developer of the Marthis Camp project. As Tim alluded to, we had hoped very much to be here arm in arm, singing kumbaya on an understanding. We're not quite there. We got a proposal back from the retreat late last night, we were just out in front, talking through a few details about that. You know, before the last scheduled hearing, we had a basic understanding about a private shuttle operation. We euphemistically refer to that as the 4-2 plan, which basically would allow private shuttles between Marthis Camp and North Star Village, four per hour during the winter, two per hour during the summer. That basic idea has been agreed to for a while now. We have some additional details that are outstanding about the mechanics of this trial period that Tim alluded to, and some issues about whether these shuttles would pick up the retreat residents, and some other problems that I am not, I can't tell you today we're confident will be resolved. I would hope they would, because I think they're relatively minor compared to the basic notion of having a 4-2 shuttle plan. If you decide to proceed with the abandonment today, we continue to believe that that 4-2 shuttle operation is reasonable, that it's fair, and we would ask that you impose that as a condition of your approval today. I'd like to hand up, excuse me, it's a, it's a letter that outlines proposed conditions of approval. Excuse me, Charlotte, can I get one of those back? And so I can give you a brief description of the proposal. Just like the other conditions, we are proposing that you, that you require as a condition of the abandonment, that there be a grant of an easement that permits continued operation of shuttles at that, at that 4-2 level, and it's, you know, various details along with that in terms of the size of the shuttles and everything. It is generally consistent, not consistent in every detail with our discussions with the retreat, but this is the gist of what we have proposed. It also would require as a condition that there be an easement for pedestrian access through the gate. That's also been the subject of discussion between us and the retreat, and provides for this, the tolling agreement and clarification that the resolution of abandonment would not be recorded during this trial period. I, so this is, if, I had, as I said, I'd hoped to be here with a deal in place, and we're sorry that that's not the case. If the board moves forward with the abandonment, which we continue to believe is not consistent with the abandonment statute, we would ask that you impose these conditions of approval. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, given that this is a continuation of a previous public hearing, I'm going to ask at this time if there's anybody that has not yet spoken to the board on this item, if they're interested in adding their voice to the record, to please step forward and do so now. And then I will allow for anyone who might already have addressed the board, who would like to readdress the board, to please go ahead and do so at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Tim Tarrant, I'll be brief. Yeah, we obviously oppose this condition. It would grant them permanent rights, which is inconsistent with everything that we've discussed over the past two years, and undermine any other settlement negotiations that we're involved in now. And then also, curiously, they have consistently said throughout this process that the county cannot select one subset of the public in an abandonment proceeding and give them rights to use the road, private rights. Public rights, yes, you can, but this, they're just selecting one, you would be selecting one subset of the public, giving them permanent rights, inconsistent with everything we've been talking about. If we agree to this as two private parties in the future, that would work, but doing it this way is just inappropriate, we strongly oppose it. Thank you.
All right, anybody else wish to address the board in the public comment? You have a rebuttal, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a very, a very brief one. At the end of the day, we think this 4-2 shuttle program is fair, it's the right thing for the board to do. This is the board's decision. I understand that this, the retreat doesn't want us to have these permanent rights yet, that they want to have that leverage over us for future negotiations. I understand that from their perspective. This is a legislative action, that's what you've been telling us. This is- This is what we think is a fair shuttle program that provides for the shuttle access that was generally consistent with what was contemplated in the retreat EIR, and we ask that you impose it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody not being paid by the hour that wishes to address the board on this item? All right, seeing none, we're going to close public hearing and finally bring this back to the board for our final consideration on this item. Supervisor Wigan, I see you're the first to punch the button over there.
Yeah, just a question. So I'd like a more full discussion as to the four-two or any, my understanding, based on questions I've asked in the past, is that the county would retain the right to have any and all scale and scope of public transit be retained as a result of our action today if we in fact did the action that's proposed with the abandonment, and so I'd like to hear some feedback as it relates to this offer within that context, and I guess legally can wander off into some detailed discussion as to what the definition of public transit is and so forth and so on, but I want to make sure that the county's rights to that public transit is still protected and perfected with this proposed change.
Part of your board package, part of the reservations that you are reserving rights for the public is specifically for public transit. We will retain that right to operate public transit on that roadway. In terms of what it prevents two private parties from agreeing to, they can agree to what they choose to and allow what they can. That would not impact our ability to operate public transit into the future, when and if we choose to do so. And I'll let counsel, if there's anything to add to that.
Nothing to add, that's an accurate summary.
And I would point out that the issue of public transit versus private transit was before the board at the August 4 hearing, and the direction that we received was that it was going to be a public transit only.
Thereby deferring any conversation of private transit to this conversation that's happening between the two, the two parties. Supervisor Wigan, did you have some follow-up on that? No, Supervisor Graham?
Yeah, keeping it public transit provides the opportunity for grants to assist and offset that cost, correct?
Absolutely, for our, for public transit.
Right.
All right, I see no other questions or comments. We have before us the resolution adopting findings and statement of facts associated with the proposed abandonment of the public road easements. We have the resolution to abandon the public road easement to Millsight Road and the Crosscut Court within the retreat subdivision, and the terms and conditions of abandonment. And we have an indemnification agreement that we're being asked to approve between Placer County and the retreat at North Star. There was one question that was raised in regard to the condition about future public use within the Martis Camp somehow then creating a condition, and it was requested that that be, that condition be dropped.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, in light of the applicant's request, county council has no objection to the removal of that provision, while we don't believe it's an illegal condition. We have no objection to it being removed, and if that's the board's desire, we would recommend that small Roman number three on page 123 and on 126, that's condition 31 on page 123, and then the first paragraph at the top of page 126, that small Roman three be deleted, and that the conjunctive or be added before Roman, small Roman two. And our office will prepare a revised resolution for the record. We can read that in at this time, and we'll have a formal printed.
Great, thank you. All right, let's pleasure the board. Yes?
We'd also like the board's authority to enter into a tolling agreement if the parties come to that, so that we don't need to come back to the board for that purpose.
Okay. Mr. Salmon, did you have some further clarification?
No, I believe the, Mr. O'Brien wanted to confirm that the tolling agreement was part of any board action today.
Okay, thank you. All right.
So with those various changes and amendments.
Okay. We have a motion, Montgomery, Second Homes, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none, thank you very much. Okay, we will jump back to our department head items, beginning with item number seven. This is environmental engineering, a budget revision regarding our sewer and water loans repayment. Mr. Graham, in his newly minted position as facilities guy, gets to have this conversation. Facilities guy, is that on your card?
That's, that's right, that's okay.
That's how it reads, facilities guy.
Good morning, Chairman, Board members. My name is Ken Graham with Department of Public Works and Facilities. This next item, we're asking you to cancel reserves in the amount of $2 million to pay various loans to sewer districts that were made back in 2010 and 2012 for various improvements that we'll talk about, with the idea that eventually we're going to be requesting that the entire loan amount, principal amount of 6.49 million perhaps be paid over the next three years. Those next, those future years will be coming back to your board, but we felt important as we talk about the policy issue today, that we do intend to do that in future budgets. A little bit of background, regulatory requirements have been really increasing forever on our wastewater and water systems that we operate throughout the county, particularly on our small-sized districts. They don't have the same capability and the same rate payer base to be able to fund all the necessary changes that are being demanded of them. I think that has led in part to your board decision to regionalize these sewer maintenance district one, SMD one area here, and taking our treatment for all of that wastewater down to Lincoln to have that, have it be done down there, where they can have the facilities to do it as cost effectively as possible. So talking a little bit, and whenever we do have these improvements that need to be done, we're typically looking for grant money, but what we've always found, all these loans were done for projects that also had attached grants associated with them, but we have not been able to get typically 100% funding for any of these projects that have needed to be done. Let's talk about them just separately, so you have a little bit of background on each one. The Sheridan Sewer Project, your board approved a loan for $370,000. That loan covered in part operating costs for that district, as well as a spray field project that was done to, that was done for regulatory reasons. And along with an additional storage pond that had been previously done, we were able to provide a few upwards of 100 new potential connections to the sewer system in the Sheridan area. That $370,000 reflects really for 200 connections or households, which is really a cost of $1,850 per household, that burden being put on them, and that's in Sheridan. Sheridan Water also had similar issues, another small district that had requirements put on there. Your board approved a $960,000 loan to cover operational improvements, as well as a new well and a new tank, to meet some of the regulatory compliance for redundancy that was made necessary, and also allowed for some new connections to be made to the Sheridan Water system. That loan, 960,000, for essentially the same 200 connections, is about a $4,800 per household burden on those folks. So you put that together, in Sheridan, really the same people had between wastewater and water supply, about a $6,600 burden per household. From there, we go to actually to the larger one, which is the Applegate Sewer Project, where your board approved loans at $5,160,000 in several installments or chunks, again to cover some of the operational expenses, particularly when we were mandated not to allow any runoff from our ponds to occur. We actually, one winter, had to actually truck wastewater from Applegate down to SMD one in order to dispose of it in a proper manner. But the biggest portion of that was really for the regionalization of that sewer system, bringing the, piping that wastewater, bringing it into the SMD system, so that hopefully we no longer have that same issue. It's our recommendation or expectation that really we can't expect the rate payers to be able to bear that high of a cost. For Applegate, $5,160,000 is spread over 32 connections. That comes out to $161,000 loan burden per household. We don't think that's reasonable to expect for those folks to be able to cover over time. We don't know how, how high the sewer rate would have to go to actually make up those kinds of dollars. So the question then for your board, you know, we do want to try to relieve this burden, we believe it's there, we believe it's, the loan at the time had a 10-year repayment. We've been paying interest, or at least the Sheridan Sewer and Sheridan Water have been able to pay their share of the interest over time, but by paying that interest, we're not saving money for those future projects that Sheridan is going to be needing. We're paying principal, or excuse me, we're paying interest on the loan that was made. For Applegate Sewer, I'm not sure how that $161,000 that could ever be repaid. So what's changing? I think in terms of Applegate, the solution really was the regionalization project. We are now taking that wastewater, bringing it to SMD one. The intent there is, once we get this loan settled, that we would be coming back to request your board to annex the Applegate into the SMD one area, because it would be free and clear of any debt, and they would basically join the greater pool of rate payers in the SMD one program. So any changes needed in that entire sewer district could be borne by everyone equally and not just individuals. We don't believe, though, that it's proper for SMD one rate payers to pay for the loan to bring Applegate Sewer District into SMD one. Sheridan, a little bit different story, an isolated area, very difficult, there aren't many alternatives to providing sewer and water service to the town of Sheridan. I do believe, right now, we are paying the interest, that's preventing us from collecting money again for the capital improvements. We are collecting some, but I cannot tell you today that when the next regulatory requirement comes down, that there'll be a new demand for us to do something different with our system that the folks of Sheridan and those districts won't be able to bear. So I think one out of two probably handled, but the Sheridan will be an ongoing issue. And I don't have a simple solution, other than trying to relieve this burden at this time, which will allow the interest payment to not have to be as great and hopefully go away, and those dollars that we're raising will go towards future capital improvements to keep them in compliance. I think that's it. I think with that, again, we're requesting your board to make this initial commitment of $2 million cancelling reserves to begin paying off those loans to those various sewer districts, and we would be happy to answer any questions. I will, actually, one thing that I will add that I think is important to note for folks, that when you did make those loans, part of those programs were to increase the rates. We did increase the rates to the rate payers at that time to make sure that first and foremost, they're covering their operational costs, which they are doing at this time. Can't say that'll happen forever, but they're doing it at this time, but it does, we did not increase it enough to provide for future regulatory changes. With that, happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Supervisor Graham?
Yeah, when, ultimately, when does this subsidy stop at any time? You know, it sounds to me like you've got the 80 corridor under control, but you know, when we talk about Sheridan, and don't take offense, Robert, when does the music stop?
That's right.
You know, I've got to justify taking $6.9 million of county funds to help out two areas, you know, with less population than, you know, a fire district, you know? So how do we, what's the rubric here to get to where we're even? Are we just going to keep pouring money into these areas, or, you know? And it's funny, because I hear a lot of people that come from areas, you know, talk about how great, you know, it is and wonderful, and this, that, and the other thing, and they criticize us for how we use money, and this is a perfect example of how we're, you know, we're subsidizing their ability to live out in the wilderness. So tell me how we're going to fix this problem.
Sure. First off, Applegate, I think the solution is there. That's about regionalizing it, getting it so they're no longer a group of 20, 32 people, or 32 households, excuse me, that have to cover their costs 100%. And so anything that happens, they cover 100%. The idea with this was to get their sewer district straightened out, get it plugged into the SMD one program, which is a larger program, so now any improvements that, well, subsequently, we're going to be requesting your board to annex Applegate into SMD one. When that occurs, they're part of a larger sewer base.
Sure.
They're part of the same base. So I think that one is.
I get that.
That's fixed.
Let's talk about the other side.
Yeah, that's the tougher one. Sheridan is tougher. In fact, I would say, long-term, the creation of small districts, now we'll talk in general before I talk Sheridan, the creation of small districts for anything and expecting them to pay in a climate where things are always changing, it is very difficult for small districts to be sustainable. You do not have the rate base to spread any cost other than the initial cost you first thought was going to go into there. And what we found out, particularly in the last 10 or 20 years in wastewater and water, regulatory requirements are going up exponentially. So long-term policy, probably need to be careful about forming small districts, period. With Sheridan, I do not have the easy answer. They are so far outside our current areas that we are susceptible to whatever regulatory requirements that may change. We do not have a system that we could easily bring that wastewater down the hill. Maybe someday, there's something that happens in Wheatland. Wheatland has some things going on, maybe there'll be the opportunity, that's not that far away, but that's purely speculative at this point. I do not have an answer for you about how we fix Sheridan without going to a very unrealistically expensive project to bring it in with other rate payers in another area, like Lincoln is probably the closest place.
Now, this money is just for the debt service on the work, we're not supporting their operations as far as, you know, their staffing and all that. Are we doing that as well?
No. So when the loan was made, a portion of that at that time was operational cost to pay for that period of time, but through the board action at that time, or I think it was subsequent to that, your board approved rate increases to ensure that they were paying for their operational costs, and they currently are providing for their operational costs, they're providing for the interest burden, and they provide a little bit extra still for future capital improvements, building up a reserve, which, once this debt is paid off, that interest burden can now move into the capital, future capital improvement burden.
What was the analysis when this was first brought forward, when the projects were first brought forward? Was the board told that there was a good likelihood that we wouldn't get paid back?
I wasn't here, or I was here, but I wasn't in the position I was, so I want to be careful of how I speak, and I see Bill Zimmerman coming up here, and I think with these numbers, I do believe there was some discussion, but I will let Bill comment.
We did include, Bill Zimmerman with Public Works and Facilities, we did include in our staff reports discussion that we didn't anticipate that the small districts would be able to repay those loans, but as part of the, it was a social contract, we called it, with the community, we actually went in Sheridan and they paid a combined $55 per month for water and sewer. We've raised that up now to about 140, someplace right in there, and like Ken says, they are covering their operational costs. We are starting to put money away for future capital projects, and we've been pretty successful up there in getting grant money to offset a good portion of that cost.
Good, no, I appreciate the information. I wasn't here. It's good to know that the board was told that this would likely happen, you know? And that's my comment. I think fleshing this out, especially with that particular corridor in the county, I think it's going to be real important to figure out a solution, rather than just saying we're going to go ahead and do infrastructure without being able to, you know, get it paid off, so.
Supervisor Wigan?
Just add another piece of information, that again, you know, it's not money in the bank today, but it's an option that may be viable in the future regarding Sheridan is when regional, the whole notion of regional sewer solutions in all of South Placer was first contemplated 20 years ago. The most, we studied at some level piping Sheridan's wastewater to Lincoln, which I think was about a 10 or 12-mile route to the plant. Bill might actually remember these details, but.
That sounds correct.
With the adoption of the Lincoln General Plan, the closest specific plan or village in their general plan now is two or three miles from Sheridan, and actually along the old Highway 65 corridor, so a pretty viable route to the point that that gets built out, but we do need to make sure we work with Lincoln to make sure there's adequate oversizing, which wouldn't be huge in this case, but that then would put them in a.
It seems to me that if you look over time, that that's really the only place that growth can occur without, with the exception of the West Side, so, you know, a solution will come in the future, it's just not. It's just not viable right now. But it's a good discussion, so.
All right. Comments by the board members before we have the conversation publicly, for those who want to have it. Seeing none, any members of the public want to address the board on this item?
Lee Bastian, Sheridan MAC. And, and Duran's comment about when we raised the rates, us on the MAC board were about ready to be tarred and feathered. But we did approve the rates, and I just wanted to ask that your board approve this item.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right. Seeing none, we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for, for action. Motion, Duran, second. Wigan, as this is a budget revision, requires a roll call.
Duran? Wigan? Holmes? Montgomery?
Yes.
Euler.
Aye. Thank you very much. And our last department head item is property management disposition process, Kings Beach Center.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Eric Finley, Department of Faci, or Public Works and Facilities, one of the facilities guys, property management. As part of the ultimate disposition for the Kings Beach Center, staff is seeking your board's approval to release a request for information to, from interested buyers and developers of the property. Included in this request is a resolution authorizing the director of Public Works and Facilities to execute a real estate services agreement with a broker to assist with exposure and marketing of the property. The Kings Beach Center is a three-and-a-half acre property in the heart of the Kings Beach Town Center. It currently consists of 16 parcels. There are commercial leased buildings, residences, and vacant property on the, at the Kings Beach Center. The six, excuse me, the successor agency to the former redevelopment agency acquired the property in September of 2014 as a result of default on promissory notes by the former owner. The successor agency developed a long-range property management plan for the disposition of multiple properties in Kings Beach, including the Kings Beach Center. The long-range property management plan specified that the ultimate disposition of the, would allow the future mixed-use development consistent with planning documents and community desires. The long-range property management provided for the transfer of the property from the successor agency to the county to facilitate management disposition, disposition and development of the property. The long-range property management plan was approved by the successor agency board, the oversight board, and ultimately, the Department of Finance. And the property was conveyed to the county in December of 2014. With its size and location, the Kings Beach Center presents the greatest opportunity for environmental improvement and commercial development as contemplated by the county's Tahoe Basin Area Plan and as well as the Kings Beach Vision Plan. Staff is recommending the release of a request for information to identify potential developers and buyers with the knowledge and resources to complete a project with, consistent with community interests. Responses will be evaluated depending on the results received. The county can then proceed with a request for proposal or possibly enter into direct negotiations with a single party. The RFI is proposed to be released before or during the first quarter of 2016. The successor agency is also disposing of three properties in Kings Beach, and staff is recommending that the release of the Kings Beach Center RFI coincide with the release of an RFI for Town Center South, which is a one-acre property across the street from the Kings Beach Center. And it's, there's potential that the Town Center South property could be incorporated into a potential Kings Beach Center project design. To maximize, maximize exposure of the property to qualified developers, staff is recommending that the county procure a broker to provide real estate consulting services. These services will be provided on a time and materials basis, not to exceed $20,000. If the broker is entitled with a future date to a commission as addressed in a purchase and sale agreement or a lease agreement, the broker's consulting fees would then be subtracted or reduced from the ultimate commi, commission paid. Staff believes our recommended disposition process will provide the highest value for the property, will facilitate future project development, and will also bring the greatest potential return to the taxing entities. And with that, welcome any questions.
Questions by board members on this item. Seeing no lights, any members of the public want to address the board? Pareto's taking action. Bring it back to the board, Supervisor Montgomery.
Mr. Chairman, just wanted to let you know, I did check to see if there was anyone in Tahoe, since we seem to have lost our video connection. Apparently, there is no, no one there still.
Okay.
So, just heads up.
Thank you. All right. It's pleasure, the board. So we have a motion, Montgomery, second. Wigan? No, it was Wigan, I think snuck in just, just by nose, yeah. Which with Holmes is quite something. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none? Thank you very much.
You have better hearing than I do.
Oh, boy. I tell you, I'm the funniest guy I know. All right. With that, we have a, an 11:30 timed item, but prior to, obviously, us taking that, we have a little bit of time, so we're going to go ahead and squeeze in some closed session items in that gap. So, County Council, you will please go ahead and lead us into closed session here.
As time permits, the board will adjourn to closed session and to discuss two items of existing litigation, Wesley Holdings versus the county, and, and supplemental agenda posting for anticipated litigation. A claim with a claimant Lori Foo, conference with real property negotiators, and two conferences with labor negotiators, one regarding DSA and one regarding PPEO.
All right. Thank you so much. We will recommence here at, at 11:30.
From closed session where they just had a conference with real property negotiators and heard a report from their real property negotiators and gave direction to their negotiation team. The board also had a conference with labor negotiators to discuss DSA negotiations and heard a report and gave direction to their labor negotiation team. And then on the PPEO matter, they heard a report from the negotiation team and gave direction to that labor negotiation team. That was all that was discussed in closed session. We'll adjourn back into closed session to deal with the litigation items.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. So we are back to take up our remaining item. That is our 11:30 timed item. This is Public Works presenting regarding our Tier Two development fee, excuse me, inflationary adjustment.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman, Board members. My name is Ken Graham, Department of Public Works and Facilities. And this next item, we're asking your board to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to adjust the Tier Two fee to reflect a 15.7% increase in the construction cost index between April of 2010 and April of 2015. The Tier Two fee is a traffic impact fee agreement that we have with the cities of Roseville, Lincoln, and Rockland to fund predominantly the Placer Parkway and to a lesser extent some improvements on the I-80 or contribution to improvements on the I-80 Highway 65 interchange. The agreement provides for, that your board approved, provides for an annual inflationary adjustment. During the economic downturn, that annual inflationary adjustment was not sought. Since that time, the cities have been increasing their, have approved this increase of 15.7%. The county needs to stay consistent with our partners on the program. The current county projects that are subject to the fee are the Placer Vineyard specific plan and the Regional University specific plan. To date, we have received no fees through that program. There have been no building permits sought for either of those two projects. We have notified, though, both Placer Vineyard's representatives as well as Regional University and the Building Industry Association. We sent them to let them know what we were proposing. That 15.7% increase, again, reflects not just one year's increase, that's actually since the inception of the program, which is really more of a approximately 3% increase per year, every year. Again, the county has collected no fees as part of this program at this point. In fact, I believe we've, the city of Roseville has just recently collected our first Tier Two fees that were made as part of the program. And so with that, we're asking you to conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution to make the adjustment in the Tier Two fee.
All right. Questions of board members or by board members of staff? Seeing none, any, we will open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board, please form one single file line. Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Second.
Motion Duran, Second Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes all of the agendaized, regularly agendaized items for the Board of Supervisors. We do have some remaining closed session items.
Board will now adjourn to return to closed session to deal with the existing litigation item of Wesley Holding versus County, the anticipated litigation item, one potential case, and the liability claim of Lori Foo.
And we will report out when we are done with those items.
Look at the throngs.
From closed session where they just had a conference with real property negotiators and heard a report from their real property negotiators and gave direction to their negotiation team. The board also had a conference with labor negotiators to discuss DSA negotiations and heard a report and gave direction to their labor negotiation team. And then on the PPEO matter, they heard a report from their negotiation team and gave direction to that labor negotiation team. That was all that was discussed in closed session. We'll adjourn back into closed session to deal with the litigation items.
All right. Thank you, Jerry. So we are back to take up our remaining item. That is our 11:30 timed item. This is Public Works presenting regarding our Tier Two development fee, inflationary adjustment.
Yes. Good morning, Chairman, Board members. My name is Ken Graham, Department of Public Works and Facilities. And this next item, we're asking your board to conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution to adjust the Tier Two fee to reflect a 15.7% increase in the construction cost index between April of 2010 and April of 2015. The Tier Two fee is a traffic impact fee agreement that we have with the cities of Roseville, Lincoln, and Rockland to fund predominantly the Placer Parkway and to a lesser extent, some improvements on the I-80 or a contribution to improvements on the I-80 Highway 65 interchange. The agreement provides for, that your board approved, provides for an annual inflationary adjustment. During the economic downturn, that annual inflationary adjustment was not sought. Since that time, the cities have been increasing their, have approved this increase of 15.7%. The county needs to stay consistent with our partners on the program. The current county projects that are subject to the fee are the Placer Vineyard specific plan and the Regional University specific plan. To date, we have received no fees through that program. There have been no building permits sought for either of those two projects. We have notified, though, both Placer Vineyard's representatives as well as Regional University and the Building Industry Association. We sent them to let them know what we were proposing. That 15.7% increase again reflects not just one year's increase, that's actually since the inception of the program, which is really more of a approximately 3% increase per year, every year. Again, the county has collected no fees as part of this program at this point. In fact, I believe we've, the city of Roseville has just recently collected our first Tier Two fees that were made as part of the program. And so with that, we're asking you to conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution to make the adjustment in the Tier Two fee.
All right. Questions of board members or by board members of staff? Seeing none, any, we will open the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to address the board, please form one single file line. Okay, thank you. We'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
Second.
Motion Duran, Second Montgomery. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed, none. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes all of the agendaized, regularly agendized items for the board of supervisors. We do have some remaining closed session items.
Board will now adjourn to return to closed session to deal with the existing litigation item of Wesley Holdings versus County, the anticipated litigation item, one potential case, and the liability claim of Lori Foo.
And we will report out when we are done with those items. We have returned from closed session. County Council, report up.
The board met in closed session for a conference with legal counsel to discuss three items of litigation. In Wesley Holdings versus County of Placer, the board heard a report from counsel and authorized the defense and indemnity of the Placer County Treasurer Task Collector and waived the conflict to allow the county council's office to represent both the county and the treasurer tax collector. In the liability claim of Lori Foo, the board heard a report from counsel and gave direction to counsel. And in the item that was posted on the supplemental agenda, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation, the board heard a report from counsel and gave direction to counsel. direction to counsel. That concludes the closed session report.
Thank you, Jerry. And there being no other items on our November 3rd agenda, we are adjourned to our regularly scheduled meeting of November 17th.